Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the Watzburg area school district where we are student centered and future focused for a world-class education. Just like to wish everyone a happy new year and welcome you to our finance committee meeting. I'd just like to remind our attendees tonight that committee meetings are different than work sessions or regular meetings. The administration will make a presentation to the board and the community, and then the board will have a board discussion. The public will have time for comment after the board's discussion. I'd also like to remind our attendees that the question and answer feature is not to be used during the meeting unless you are objecting to a perceived violation of the Sunshine Act, or if you are recognized by the president for use of the question and answer feature. So please do not use the Q and A feature as a running monologue during the meeting. When the time comes for public comment at this committee meeting, you'll be asked to submit your name and address through the question and answer feature, and then you'll be recognized and your microphone will be activated for your comments. If time runs out during this committee meeting, please know that we will allot time during the work session for any further public comment on the finance committee meeting. So I thank everyone in advance for abiding by the process we're going to follow. And with that, I will call on the finance committee chairperson, Mr. Marty Pushcheck, to call our committee meeting to order. Mr. Pushcheck?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to call the finance committee meeting to order and turn it over to Mr. Berlin and Mrs. Bending.
Thank you, Mr. Pushcheck.
Yes, thanks, Mr. Pushcheck. We do have an agenda and some accompanying documents to present and reference. So Mrs. Bending will put up some of those documents now and move through them as we move through our presentation, and then any questions or discussion. So, Mrs. Bending.
Thank you. So, first things first, the agenda we're going to try and stick to and follow tonight is just for consideration of time restraints. So hopefully, we're going to be able to get through the first five items in the half-hour, the outline of the Act One Index, tax revenue projections, the basic ed funding projections, some highlights of the budget summary, and then the budgetary amendment. Then we'll talk about the Durham Transportation Contact, the Tax Collector Compensation Resolution, and the Erie County Technical School renovation and related resolutions. That, some of those items will appear on the agenda for consideration at next week's voting meeting. Just to get started, the purpose of this tonight's presentation is not to have an in-depth discussion about line items that are in the budget unless you have specific questions about those things. At this time in the year, the budget that is prepared is a very high-level overview of where we see the budget going. And the Act One Index timeline dictates how much that we have to have a vote, to vote not to go above the index, or a preliminary budget prepared for public inspection by the 28th of January. So, I'm going to move right into some of the documents that we have here. The first is this timeline for events related to the budgeting process, the special section, Act One of 2006. We are, as a school district, we are required to follow this timeline, and right now, we're at the section where it says, "January 28th, the school district deadline to make the 21-22 proposed version of the preliminary budget available for public inspection, or adopt a resolution pursuant to Section 311D1 indicating that it will not raise taxes, raise the rate of any tax by more than its index." So, the purpose of tonight's meeting is to make you, as the board, feel comfortable being able to stay within an Act One Index increase and not need to seek exceptions, resolution exceptions. So, that being said, I'm going to skip through the rest of the timeline. I know that I had some, I had a board member ask me about the historical tax data. So, real estate historical data. I put together this chart, and I apologize, it's very large, but I was trying to get it all on one page. So, is everybody able to see that okay, or do I need to make it larger?
I can see it.
Okay. All right. So, I went back to 2005, '06. I had, I didn't have a lot of data prior to 2013, '14, which was the year that I had started here at the district. So, I kind of pieced together some stuff, this data from the tax records that we had, but I didn't have any budget prep information from that time period. So, it's not as intuitive as the rest is. The first item on the top of the chart is the taxable assessed value. This is the total taxable assessed value of all of the properties that submit real estate taxes within the district. And then, I will make mention at this time that the countywide reassessment happened in the year 2013, '14, where you can see that the total assessed value jumped a large sizable amount from the previous year, 2012, '13, into 2013, '14, which is where the county decided that they were going to go through and reassess all of the properties at a more relevant rate. This tax millage is the next item. Tax millage is the amount on each $1,000 of assessed valuation. So, I know that millage sometimes can be a hard thing to understand and to know where it comes from, so I did do an explanation at the bottom. Millage is the dollar amount on each $1,000 of assessed valuation. So, our current millage is 19.7786 mils, or $19.78 on each $1,000 of assessment. So, well, what does that mean to you as a taxpayer, or as a board member? What does that generate for us? So, I went through and found the average assessment by township and borough. I took the total, the total amount of assessment by each township or borough, and divided it by the parcel count to get the average rate, average assessment. So, and then I multiplied it by the millage that we have to give you the average tax bill. So, for instance, in Green Township, the average assessed value property is about 120,000. So, if the home is assessed at $120,000, that would mean that their tax bill is $2,373.43. That's the school district portion. So, other townships and boroughs, the boroughs have a lower average assessment, as listed below. That is due to the varying ranges of property values in those areas. So, the next part in the chart is the tax levy that's generated by the mills. So, if you take the millage rate, and let's say in 2020, '21, which is this current year, if we take the 19.7786 and multiply it by the 590,299,505 total assessed value for the district, this is going to generate $11,675,298. And then, we don't count on getting that whole amount. We say, okay, we're going to have a 95% collection rate, and then that's the amount that we actually receive in revenue. The next line down is the mills above the index. So, I went back through the historical data and found that I wasn't able to find if we went above the exceptions in 2005 through 2010. But from 2010, '11, I was able to determine that there was a .79 millage amount above the index, meaning the board at that time sought to seek referendum exceptions to raise the tax levy greater than what the index allows by this, was allowed by the state. So, for two years in a row, 2010, '11, '11, '12, they were above the index, and then in 2013, they did not go above the index. And then, '14, '15, '16, '17, and '18, all five years were sought to go above the index. And then, we have not done that since 2017, '18. The increase in the millage from the prior year is the next line, and it shows how much the millage increase went up from the prior year. So, you can see, I have listed in red the years when there was no tax increase, including this year, 2012, '13, and 2017, '18. And I'd like to point out that in the years after a no-tax increase, or a minimal tax increase, like the .35 and .25 in 2008, '09, '10, there was two years where you had to raise taxes to the index and seek referendum exceptions in order to balance the budget. And then, in 2012, '13, there was no tax increase. And then, for four or five years after that, and again, we were still seeking to make up for the years prior, and the budget deficit was getting greater, which caused a need for that to happen. But you can see how a no-tax increase can be detrimental for future budgets, because the millage doesn't get increased, which means that when you multiply by the total taxable assessed value, you're still, you're not getting any more revenue for that same amount of properties. I did list the next line as the increase and decrease in the assessments. So, it shows an average, it shows the historical increase or decrease in the assessments. So, this is people putting additions on their homes, remodeling, buying additional property and developing it, putting on, you know, built, new houses going up. All, those are all things that could increase or decrease an assessed, the total assessed value in the district. So, for the past couple of years, we've had some steady growth where it's over $2 million each year, just in the base taxable assessed values. So, I also show the increase in revenue from the assessment change. So, just say we had no tax increase whatsoever. This amount that is in this line is showing just the increased revenue from the assessment change. So, if in 2019, '20, you can see the increase, the assessment was about 2.5 million dollars that generated $50,000. That's what the increase to that amount of assessment is going to give in a tax levy. And then, the total amount of the budgeted revenue or, and expenditures. So, historically, what was the total amount of our budgets for the last 15 years? So, you can see how that is. And then, I also showed the percentage of the tax levy of the total budget. So, anything that isn't in the total budget, so, as in 2020, '21, our budget, our local revenue is 45.05% of the total revenue that we're, we expect to bring in. The other 55% comes from the state and/or federal programs. Okay? Does anybody have any questions about this real estate tax historical data?
I have a quick question, Vicki.
Sure.
So, the, so I understand the, the millage above index. So, is the index something that the state tells us, or what exactly, how is the index created?
Yes, I'm sorry. So, each year, the state states what the index is, and then each school district has a little bit of an adjustment to it depending on their position, their financial position, or their ability to raise tax revenues, or that kind of thing. And that's, it's, it's a ratio that is applied, and then we get an adjusted. And those are all listed and published by PDE on their website to show what our index is. It's actually all 497 school districts in the state of Pennsylvania. It shows what their index is, what the actual is, what their adjustment is, and what their adjusted index is. So, it is something that's given to us by the state. I probably should have listed that on this chart so that we would know what it is, but I didn't, because I was more concerned about the actual millage.
And I can just add to that, this Act One of 2006, the whole premise behind it, from the PA Assembly, was to make sure that school districts, when they raise taxes, are doing it in a judicious manner that fits within the socioeconomic blueprint of their district. Now, so it is, it's a, it's a pretty long formula that takes into account, like Vicki had said, per capita income, how much assessed property you have, how much you can act, how much revenue you can actually raise in perspective with what your, your school size is and your population size.
Okay.
Vicki, this is Tara.
Go ahead.
On the, the one document that we have about the 2021, 21, '22, Act One Accelerated Budget Procedure, the, in, it talks about, the option is only available to school districts that are certain the next year budget can be funded without increasing real estate tax. So, did that change, well, I guess, what am I trying to say? We raised taxes and we went above the index, so we got an exception. Five years in a row, or four years in a row, we see, five years in a row. How is that possible if the, what the document says right now is that we're, we don't want to, we can't raise taxes after the next following year? Does that make sense? I'm, I'm not saying it right.
Okay.
So, we, we raised taxes and went about, got an exception to go above the index.
Correct.
For the years in a row. But in the, in the document, it says, "The school district is sure that they're not going to raise taxes the next year." But they did it five years in a row back then.
So, I, I think I know what your question is, Tara. Yeah, no, I understand it. The exceptions, you can apply for an exception to go above the index in any given year, but there's only a limited number of things you can do it for. The, the two primary ones would be special education costs, and I guess the next highest one would be, so, special education, oh, Peasars retirement, okay. And those were added into that particular piece of legislation, because we can't control special ed costs. I mean, those students are entitled to the services that they need, so we provide those regardless of whatever they are. So, we never know what that cost is. And, and depending on, you know, what type of students or population you have in a given time, you can have students that come through the system that have really high needs, and then that's going to raise your, your costs for a while. So, that's why these exceptions, these kind of safety valves were built in. And, and of course, the retirement one, I've talked about this many times, I've put it in the Bobcat, but if you go back 10, 12 years, our, we were only contributing about 2% to 3% of our payroll towards retirement, the Pennsylvania retirement system. And it's, it is unfunded right now to the tune of $60 billion. So, that's what that other exception is for, because just to put it in perspective, we're now up around, I think, 34% or 35% of payroll goes to the state for retirement. So, just to, just so everyone understands what, what that means, I like to say, for every three employees we have walking around the school building, you have a fourth phantom employee. And they're not, it's not a phantom, it's a retired teacher, or school employee, former school employee of some type. You know, that's, we're funding their retirement. So, that's the reason for the other exception. And that's, we had gotten way behind because of the zero tax raises and the very low percentage tax raises, and it finally caught up to the point where the parking lot need repaved, we didn't have any computers, the curriculum budget was zero. You know, there's a lot of things we had to address over those four or five years. And part of being able to do that was going above the exceptions to take care of the special ed folks and to, and to accommodate the retirement increase while we were also funding those other initiatives. So, I hope that, I guess maybe I overexplained it, but.
No, that was good. Thank you.
And since we're talking about exceptions, I skipped ahead to where I was going to talk about the, the exceptions, or the possible exceptions, that should you vote to not stay within the index? Well, what does that mean? What, what can we get if we decide that, okay, we want to have a preliminary budget available to the public next week, or after the board meeting, that we, how much money can we get as an exception if, if, should you want to vote to go above the index? So, as Ken mentioned, there are three things that you can apply for expense, exceptions, special ed expenditures, retirement contributions, and the third one is construction. So, back in the day when PlanCon was available, and the state was giving school districts 40, 50, or 60% back on all of their debt service for construction, people were applying for, well, we can, we can go above the index if we need to update our buildings, and we're going to get money back from the state to help us pay for our debt service. Right now, with, with PlanCon not really, is not available, I don't think that that exception is used much, and we have no new construction plans at this time that we would be eligible to apply for them. But I did use this, this is the, I'm on the screen as the special ed expenditures, this is the exception calculation, and this is the state mandated calculation to find out how much money is available in a referendum exception. So, for, we have to compare our 2019, '20 special education expenditures, and then subtract out the amount of special education funding that we've received from the state, and to find out what our net special education expenditures are. And then, the prior year is the same idea. And then, you take the difference of, so you take the, this year's index, the 4.1% and multiply it by the net special ed expenditures from 2018, '19, which is about $59,000. And then, subtract 2019, '20 special education expenditures, the net, and subtract out the 2018, and that's about $239,000. And then, the allowable referendum exception is the 239,000 minus the 59,000. So, we would be eligible to apply for about an additional $180,000 above the Act One Index. So, this is the additional amount that property taxes can be raised to generate this dollar amount, which, then I gave the equivalent of the millage increase. It's equal to about .3165 mils, and 1.6% above the allowable 4.1% in expenditures. And then, the retirement contributions is the same kind of type of calculation. You take the 2021, '22 estimated share of the payments to Peasars, and next year's rate is 34.95%. And then, the 2020, '21 estimated school district share of payments to Peasars at 34.51%, which is this year's current rate. And then, take the index amount by the 2021, and take the 2021 minus the 20, or 21, '22 minus the 2021 share, and you end up with a negative amount, which means that we're not eligible for any referendum exception. When Peasars was making large jumps, there were years where it went from 16% to 21%. When they were making large jumps, this, this amount was huge, where people were applying for exceptions for retirement contributions, because these are things that are outside of our control as a local board. We cannot, cannot, without cutting employees, there's no way that we're going to be able to manage large jumps in the retirement contribution such as we had in 2009, '10, '10, '11, '11, '12, and years following. Now, it's kind of leveled off, where it's only going up a fraction of a percentage, so the, the amount is not as great. So, this is what we're looking at if you should choose to go above the Act One Index. And I also created this financial projection over the next five years. I provided four years of historical data, and then five years looking forward into the future. So, there are some assumptions in this projection. You have to assume that your continued annual average increase in the taxable assessment, remember in the last chart I talked about, last year it was $2.5 million, and what that can generate. I took the last five years of the taxable assessment value and figured out what the increase was, and took the average of that, just in the assessment value, and said, okay, it's about $2 million. So, if we continue every year to have $2 million in assessed value, that's what I've assumed in this, in this scenario. I also assumed that the property tax collection percentage will remain unchanged at 95%. We're not going to seek to say, well, next year, because everybody hasn't been working, they're not going to pay 95%. Or next year, because everybody is back to work, everybody's going to be able to pay their tax bills, so we're going to jump that up to 99% or 100%. We just have to remain status quo and keep as many variables the same for, for a projection picture. This projection is only relative to the property tax revenue. It doesn't, it doesn't take into consideration that state revenues could be less, or federal programming funding could be cut, or increase greatly, or that kind of thing. We're going to assume that all other local, state, and federal revenue is funded at the current amount. So, let's take a look at scenario one, no tax increase. So, the important part is the, the yellow highlighted areas. So, increase in revenue from a prior year, if there's no tax increase, is going to be about $37,000. $37,000 is the amount that you would generate based on an average $2 million in assessment at our current millage. Our expected expenditures each year, without going into a great detail, is about 2.5%. Most of our salaries are increased at 2.2%, 2.4%, 2.6%. And we have set increases in the collective bargaining agreements that dictate what that expenditure increase is. So, we assume everything's going to increase by 2.5%. So, our expenditures are going to go up to these respective amounts. And then, the projected deficit, deficit is $610,000 for next year, 626 the following year, 643 the following year, and over a five-year period, it's about $3.2 million. So, that would be a zero tax increase to all of our, for real estate taxes. Scenario number two is a 2% tax increase in the first year, and then 1% going forward. So, again, this is staying within the Act One Index, being conservative, wanting to not raise taxes greatly. Again, we're expected that our expenditures are going to go up 2.5% each year. The increase from the prior year with a 2% is going to generate about $260,000. And then, the following year, because we're going down to 1%, about 152, 154. So, over five years, we would generate about $880,000 in tax revenue. The projected deficit in the first year is about $387,000, and then gradually increases each year after that for a deficit over five years of 2.5 million. And I'd just like to point out also that this 2% increase, the additional amount per house assessed at $100,000, is the equivalent of $39.56 on top of is the equivalent of thirty nine dollars and fifty-six cents on top of a tax bill. On top of whatever their tax bill is already. So thirty-five dollars, thirty-nine dollars on each a hundred thousand dollars of assessment. And then the third and final scenario I have is the act one increase. With an act one index increase the first year, the four point one percent and then two percent each year after that. The increase in revenue from the prior year with a four point one percent is about four hundred and ninety-three thousand dollars. And then each year after that is two hundred and seventy to about two hundred and ninety thousand dollars. Again, the same expected two and a half percent expected increase in revenue. Projected deficit about a hundred and fifty-four thousand the first year, which equates to eighty-one dollars on a hundred thousand dollars of assessment and then three hundred and ninety-two the next year, four hundred and two, four hundred and thirteen. So again, staying within the act one index is and going to an act one increase, act one index maximum increase still doesn't get us out of a budget deficit. And being conservative in the following years after that is going to increase the deficit over the next four years after. Does anybody have any questions about this?
I do, Vicky. This is Nicole. Um, can you explain the property tax relief? I did see that we were eligible for about four hundred and sixty-three thousand dollars. So basically what that is saying, if I understood it correctly, is based on whatever formula there was, we were eligible for four hundred and sixty-three thousand dollars. And we applied that to our tax collection, right? So it's not like we're getting more money. We're just evening out instead of maybe charging more taxes on individual tax bills, a portion of that money is covered through the state, if I said that correctly.
You're on the right track. So we get four hundred and sixty-three thousand dollars, which we then in turn give back to the taxpayers through homestead, farmstead.
That's what I was going for. Thank you.
Yes. So all, all property owners have the ability to apply for a homestead or farmstead reduction in their tax bills. And out of all of the people that have applied and are eligible, that four hundred and sixty-three thousand dollars is spread out equally based on an assessed value to reduce a tax bill. And I think this last year it reduced tax bills by forty-one dollars. Or forty-two dollars and three cents or right around there. So it's not a huge savings, but it is something to people who have the homestead, farmstead enabled on their properties.
Great. Thank you.
Vicky, I just.
This is Ben. It's, it's about six thirty-five, just to keep an eye on the clock.
Okay.
Just a quick question about the average assessment increase that you calculated, the two million dollars. So I, I see historically where, you know, where you came up with that number. I guess it just was a little surprising, you know, not looking at large numbers like this as often as you do. Are you confident in that going forward? And it just seemed like on our average assessment value of our homes, you have it there as a hundred and five thousand. So it's equivalent of like twenty new homes or, or buildings that would be equivalent to that every year, I guess. A, this coming year, seeing how the pandemics affected everything. And then even going forward, I wondered if that was something we could really count on or, you know, is that best case scenario versus what's going to be realistic?
Exactly. So that's why I mentioned that we're making this assumption that there, that we're going to have that increase. We may not get that increase. And so I went back to this real estate tax historical data sheet that I had created. And you can see in two thousand seventeen, eighteen, it was just under two million, eighteen, nineteen was just under two million, nineteen, twenty was two point five million. This year it was two point four million. I've already reached out to the assessment office and asked what our current, as of, this was as of January fifth, what our assessment was. From July or June of last year, whatever number we used for when we did our budget through January, we've already had one point six million dollars worth of increase in property value. So if there are new houses built or a business comes into our, into our district, that number could go up greater. But I would think that at some point, we're going to have saturation where there isn't going to be a lot of new properties. And that could level off and not be the two million dollars in which we've made the assumption of.
Yeah, the, the projections are just a model based on where we're at right now into the future with certain assumptions like Vicky said. But we thought it was important to take a look at those because you can see that it, it's not a rosy picture. This is, and this is why all school districts across the state are screaming. Because the, in effect, when the, the state of Pennsylvania, you know, when those state legislators say, look at, we balanced the PA budget with no tax raise. Well, that's disingenuous and not honest at all. They're pushing it down to local school boards to raise taxes to make up the difference. And you can see how that, that retirement, those costs are eating us away. The cyber charter cost, we're pushing a million dollars to educate sixty kids in cyber school now. It's, it's, it's off the chart incredible. And so we've been using over the, you know, in my tenure, we've been using a combination of raising taxes, reducing staff and, and realizing saving, savings in other ways like outsourcing transportation. It's been the only way to keep the district financially solvent and to keep qualified teachers in front of our students. And that's probably what we're going to have to do going forward. Now, of course, Vicky didn't incorporate increases to our basic ed fund from the state. Normally we get about a hundred to a hundred and twenty thousand dollars there. It helps, but it doesn't, doesn't close the gap. And then, you know, the other thing that we've been doing is as people retire, we just don't replace them. Or we've actually done two, at least two large retirements since I've been here. And, you know, we helped people that were right at retirement age or getting close to it to leave a little bit early so that we could hire teachers at a lower salary, new teachers. And, you know, that we've realized a lot of savings that way. That's how we've been kind of staying ahead of this wave. But, you know, I, a lot of good board comments, it's, I mean, every year is, it's a unique puzzle to put together to figure out how we're going to get to a balanced budget in a reasonable way.
This is Tara. Can, can I ask one more question? I know we're about on time. On the retirement piece, are we mandated to provide pension to the employees? Okay. Gotcha.
Yes.
And I, I mean, it's a pretty generous retirement and that's why it costs so, well, it goes back to the Ridge administration. I could give a history lesson here, but there was a deal made with, at that time. And the conditions were just right and they ended up padding teacher retirement. And it was actually a ploy to get the, the state teachers union to agree to the charter school law, which is now killing us financially. So, you know, just again, ugly state politics has kind of led us to where we're at. But yep, it is, it's mandated and it's very expensive because the state underfunded it for over ten years.
Gotcha. Okay. Thank you.
Okay. So moving on, I wanted to cover this executive summary of the two thousand twenty-one budget prep. I start with a zero dollar amount. I kind of talk about, okay, think about what, how much money can we generate? So if we adjust our revenues with an act one increase four point one percent, that's going to generate about four hundred and ninety-one thousand dollars. Our expenditures as of right now, again, this is just a, a high level overview. I have not gone through the budget with a fine tooth comb to find any areas where it can be cut or where we're having, realizing some savings. We're not talking about fifteen teachers retiring or that kind of thing. It's about seven hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. So the deficit as of today is about two hundred and thirty-four thousand dollars. Well, how did that come about? So preliminary assumptions, we're assuming that we're going to maintain and enhance all of our programming. We're going to assume that PDE is going to continue to fund us at the current rate and that there's no major reductions due to COVID nineteen, which could potentially happen. We could have a, they could be taking us back to a prior year as a base model for how we're getting our formula amount from PDE for.
Yeah. Just to put that in perspective, about fifty percent of our budget comes from local property tax and about fifty percent, roughly speaking, comes from the state in a, in a subsidy to subsidize the education of our children. So it's about fifty, fifty. So any little change on either side of that really can put us out of balance.
I'm also going to assume that we're going to have continual, continued federal programming and transportation and special ed reimbursement. And that the funding for the ready to learn educational block grant will remain at two hundred and forty-three thousand. We do know that we have a potential for about three teacher retirements. That would generate about ninety-five thousand dollars in savings. That's just replacing all three of them at a lower teacher salary and same benefits. The maximum act one index, just for reference, is four hundred and fifty-nine thousand dollars. The difference between four fifty-nine and the four ninety-one is the actual increase in taxable assessed value. So some highlights about the budget expenditure increases. The bond debt restructuring for the athletic field complex renovation adds about six, sixty-four thousand dollars to the budget. Our salary increases are currently estimated about two hundred and twenty-three thousand. Our medical insurance rates are projected to have a significantly larger increase due to COVID and other expenditures in the market, in the insurance market, and we are self-funded. We're projected to have an eight point seven percent increase. That's in contrast to a two percent increase from last year. So the additional cost for insurance is about two hundred and forty-three thousand dollars. And the increase for retirement is a hundred and nineteen thousand. And then the transportation contract increase is at about seventy-six thousand dollars. So moving forward into the budget year, we are saying, this is what the deficit is with our current curriculum material funding set at two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Our maintenance initiatives set at a hundred and seventy-seven thousand dollars and those are listed there. Technology initiatives at about three hundred thousand, which is the amount that we've been putting into it each year for the last five or six years. And then the budgetary reserve that we have set at a million dollars, where seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars of that is set aside for charter school tuition. And the other amount is the operating contingency. Should something unexpected happen that we need to, that we need to pay for? Should a, a new teacher need to be hired for a specific program? Or we want to add additional sports and we have to come up with salaries for extracurricular advisors or that kind of thing. Just noted at the bottom that an act one index real estate tax increase is about eighty-one dollars and nine cents on a tax bill for a home assessed at a hundred thousand dollars. So that is about all I have. Just wanted to go back and mention that the, that I feel like the budget process between now and June, that the administration will be able to with an act one index increase, we should be able to cover this current two hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars worth of budget deficit by cutting things out of the budget and right sizing some items in the budget. We probably should be able to do that over the next several months and we'll have another finance committee meeting to talk about that. I just want to make sure that you all are comfortable with voting on a resolution that is listed on the board agenda to stay within the act one index and that no one has a an idea that they would like to go above the act one index based on the histor, the historical data that was presented. So that is about it for that.
So let's open this part up for board discussion regarding the preliminary budget. Again, this is just a high level view. Our only decision is taking the administration's recommendation that they feel they can present a balanced budget if we agree not to go over the act one index. That's where we're at as a board right now. We're not getting into nitty gritties and cutting just yet. What we're getting into is, do we as a board feel that with the information presented to us tonight, can we stay within that act one index raise to balance the budget?
It's Josh. I'm comfortable with that.
Thank you, Mr. Paris. And I would assume if no other comments or questions, then the board will be comfortable with that. And Vicky, you can proceed to the next item on the agenda.
The next item is to cover the budgetary amendments that are going to, that are on the agenda for this month. A budgetary amendment allows us to realize revenues that are offered to us since the board approved this year's budget last June. So there's money that's coming into the district that we had no knowledge of at that time. Most of these are due to the CARES Act and that there's funding flowing to the district for these items. And I had previously asked you, previous months had asked for budgetary transfers to transfer money from budgetary reserve to cover some of the expenditures that we were having for items that are covered by this grant funding. The budgetary amendment allows us to increase our revenue budget by realizing these amounts. And then saying or designating where we're going, what we're going to spend it on and what account strings it goes to. So it's in essence a budgetary transfer, but it's not transferring money within the budget. It's actually amending the budget to add more money to it. So does anybody have any questions about this document?
I had a quick question, Vicky. So it's showing a total new revenue of about a half million. So does this not include that most recent additional funds from the federal government that I thought was just under a million?
It does not include that because we have not been officially awarded or given an exact dollar amount. So until such time that I have that information, which I'm hoping to have that, but by February, I'll have another budgetary amendment when we have more information to be able to actually pinpoint that amount.
So, so not to confuse the two, but those, since we don't know how much money we're getting from that one, we also don't have exact expenses that either are eligible or that we plan on spending them on either yet.
Correct. That's still in the works.
Yeah. So I, I mean, Vicky and I were talking about this. This half million here has pretty much covered all the protective equipment we've bought. All the distance ed, the hotspots, you know, we're paying sixteen to twenty thousand dollars a month and sell hotspot bills for homes that couldn't, that don't have high speed internet. So we're getting approximately another million dollars and we'll have, I think, almost two years to spend that. But we, we anticipate probably another four or five hundred thousand dollars in costs before the year is done. And possibly into next fall if we have to continue our own cyber academy, which we've been funding out of these, these awards.
This is Amanda. I just had a quick question. So with the budget that we're looking at going into the, the upcoming budget period, would we be in a worse situation if we would not have received these grants that we had? Or how does this money coming in play into what we're just looking at?
This money doesn't play into what we're looking at at all because this is.
At all, totally separate.
It, it doesn't, it's not going to, it's not sustainable. It's a one-time grant. Here you go. We're going to give you two hundred and forty thousand dollars and you can buy some, you know, personal protective equipment for your, for your staff and students. We're not going to have that money next year and we don't get to keep the money if we don't actually spend it. So had we not gotten this money, we would be five hundred thousand dollars in, you know, that we would have eaten out of our budget to cover these costs because they're necessary to keep our students and staff safe and provide education for them.
Right. Okay. And that's what I guess I was looking for was, okay, thank you.
Yeah. The, the only way the new, like the new million that we're going to get, the only way I could see that coming into next year's budget would be, and they've only released some details. Of course, we can do technology and protective equipment and distance ed and all that. But you can also. But you can also upgrade HVAC equipment. And of course, the elementary school is about 26 or 27 years old. And it's in good shape, but we, we could use some of that money that, you know, we had actually planned to start replacing some of the heat pumps on that building this coming year. So we might be able to offset next year's budget in the area of maintenance for one-time costs such as ventilation upgrades to, to the elementary. But I, you know, I think we'll know more in the next couple of months how that might play out.
Okay, so that is it for the budgetary amendment. And again, we'll have more budgetary amendments as other grants are made available to us throughout the year so that we can designate and show and approve an amended budget to show where the funds are coming from and where they're going. Durham Transportation, there are agreement with them is up in June of this year. So they've asked for a renewal contract, which shows the first year they're asking for about 4.45%. And this is due greatly to wanting to give their drivers an, a rate increase, which would be about equivalent of about 3% increase to them to retain and be able to recruit drivers, which has become difficult in the past year to do so. And we need to have qualified drivers for our safe transport of our students. And then each additional year after the term is back to the 2.5% that had been in, as, over the last contract. So the first year it increases our contract cost by $76,000, which I show at the bottom is an additional cost of about $33,000 over what a 2.5% increase should they have not asked for this other increase. In addition to the driver increase, they were asked, they are covering the cost of being able to provide two district, two vans to the district in addition to 14 new school buses over the next five years, which is about 101, yeah, $1.3 million of investment into the district's transportation. The drivers' wages I covered, they were actually looking to provide, we had asked about an opportunity to have a van available for the district, for district teachers' transportation instead of paying mileage. They have the vans available for coaches to use for small sports teams like the golf team. Or if there's a team going to states, we would not have to rent a vehicle. We could use the district vehicle and cover the gas costs through that and not have the maintenance and upkeep on, on the district to maintain those vehicles. It would be up to Durham to provide that maintenance and costs, overhead costs for those, which would give us a savings for mileage for teachers and wear and tear on people's personal vehicles. So that is about all I had. Does anybody have any comments about the renewal contract?
I have a question.
I have a question.
Go ahead, Josh.
I guess it's more of a question over this past year since we haven't been busing every day. Durham did pay drivers even if they weren't working, correct?
It is my understanding that they have, yes.
Would there be any way to confirm that?
Yes, I can ask. The agreement is, was that we would pay, continue to pay them as our normal transportation. And that helps us because if we continue to pay our contracted contractor the contracted rate, we will continue to receive our subsidy for transportation in the same manner that we have in the past. And the agreement part of that is that they will continue to pay their drivers so that they're ready and available when we are back in session. But I will definitely make sure that I have that information.
Vicki, my question is about the new vans that they're offering us in this. Would that, it looks like, did you do these projections? Cause it looks like field trips obviously still have an increase every year. I wondered if the vans would in any way decrease our costs if a small group could use a van versus presumably before they'd use an entire bus?
If the group was small enough, yes, they could. It could reduce the amount of field trips. But the, and our field trip amount has been, was down significantly, obviously, because kids haven't been in school since March. Really, we haven't been going out places to keep everyone safe. So this is just projected on, based on historical data again, and what it could be if it was the same with a 2.5% increase or a 4.45% increase.
I just have one more comment or question. Even at the end of the contract, the $1.9 million, isn't that less than what we were spending on transportation prior to outsourcing it?
Yes, it's still.
So historically, transportation was increasing in the district. I did like a 15-year analysis when we looked at outsourcing and it was rising by at least 4% every year. So Durham is more than beating that and they're, and they're still providing us more and better equipped buses than we were able to purchase before because they, you know, they're, they're buying thousands of buses when we, we were buying three a year. So we just didn't have that volume purchasing power. So financially, this still continues to pay off for us.
This is Tara. I have a question. Are there other companies in the industry that have these responsibilities like any other companies we can go for? Like especially from a renewal perspective, usually you're seeking other companies in the industry who can compete against the Durums of the world. Are there any other people in the industry like that?
There are other transportation companies. In order to get a quote for them, we would have to issue a request for proposal and go through the formal process, which we have time between now and the end of June, that if you are, if the board is so interested to, to seek to do that, we certainly can move forward in that way. I would be hesitant to do that based on the idea that it is COVID closures and there's a lot of unknowns where out there that a transportation company could promise that they could deliver something or that they're going to do something at a certain rate that isn't going to work out well for us, where this is a known company. They have our buses and our routes and not that we can't, certainly, I mean, that's a decision the board can make to go to a, you know, go to a full RFP, but we are able to renew the contract year to year if that is acceptable to the board.
Mrs. Bending, I'm going to ask you to stop for a moment. What our plan will be because we still have finance committee items to go over and we still need time for public comment for the finance committee meeting. I'm going to, at seven o'clock, call the work session to order, say the Pledge of Allegiance, take the roll. And then we will resume our finance committee meeting at that time. And then we will have comment on any finance committee meeting items. And then we will go on with the regular work session. So we will stand in recess until seven o'clock to allow other attendees to come in to the meeting before we begin again at 7:00 PM. Thank you.
Just to clarify, Andy, we're staying in this.
School district where we are student-centered and future focus for world-class education. The board work session of January 11th is now called to order. I would ask if you're able to please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. May we have a roll call, please, Madam Secretary.
Mr. Blazer.
Present.
Mrs. Farrell.
Here.
Mrs. Lee.
Here.
Mr. Mattson.
Here.
Mr. Paris.
Here.
Mrs. Pekovic.
Here.
Mrs. Pound.
Here.
Mr. Pushcheck.
Here.
Dr. Pushcheck.
Here. Thank you for a roll call, Madam Secretary. For any new attendees that are joining us for the board work session, we are going to continue with our finance committee meeting first before getting into the work session agenda. And I would like to remind the audience that the question and answer feature is only to be used for a perceived violation of the Sunshine Act or when you're called upon by the president to have your microphone activated. So once we are done with the finance committee meeting, I will ask for public comment on any of the finance committee meeting items. I would ask the part, the attendees to submit their name and address. You will be called upon to have your comment. And then we will do that all over again. Once we get into the board work session, we'll have our guests and citizens comment for the work session. So right now, Mrs. Bending, would you please continue with the finance committee meeting items?
Sure. So just to pick up where we left off, we were talking about the Durham renewal contract. And I know Mr. Paris had asked the question on whether the drivers were paid during the closure. And I did receive confirmation during the break that all of the drivers were retained and none of them were laid off. So we have the answer for that. Did anyone have any more, is there any more discussion about the renewal contract or the transportation contract?
It's Josh. I just have one more comment. If you'd look at other districts, we're not the only ones that have a contractor for transportation. I think Durham does an excellent job of maintaining our buses for our students. And just a simple drive to a couple of different school districts, you'd see the difference in how the, just the equipment looks. And I'm not sure we want any of those other companies transporting our students.
This is Tara. I just want to add to what Josh is saying. I don't disagree at all, Josh. My whole thing was just to keep the companies on their toes. I think they do a great job too. But we also have an obligation to make sure that we're getting the best price from them. That was just my point.
Well, if we, you know, go with another company, maybe they can beat their price, but you put your kids on a bus that's 10 or 15 years old. I, that could break down in the, on the way to school. I don't think that's worth the savings. That's just my opinion.
Yeah, that, that wasn't my point, but okay.
Vicki. Anything else from the board regarding the Durham proposed extension?
So just a quick clarification, if we would agree to the proposed extension with additional increase, this would be for a five-year term. It wouldn't be, I thought you said something about year to year, but this would be locking ourselves in for a new five-year contract?
That is correct.
Vicki, do the, these buses have audio and video on all buses? Do you know?
I do not know the answer to that. I know that they were working towards it. I know that they all have, I believe they all have video. I can, I can find out.
Okay, thank you.
Anything further on the proposed extension for Durham? I thank the board for their questions and comments on this. I tend to agree with the comments that have been made. We're still well under what we would be paying for if we were trying to run this operation by ourselves. And I too agree with that. We're receiving an excellent product for our money on behalf of the taxpayers in the district. So thank you for that. And Mrs. Bending, next topic, please.
Okay. The next topic is the tax collector compensation resolution. Each year, we are, every five years, when there is a new election, there is, we consider an increase for tax collectors. And Mark Houston from Green Township has reached out to the district and at, in, asked for an increase of 3% over the next five years. So I did a little analysis of the tax increase request, the current, current salaries that the tax collectors receive. And then what a 3% increase each year on that is, it's equal to in anywhere from $52 to $337 in the first year. And over the next four years, it would be $4,081 total for their 3% increase. Is there any discussion?
I would just like to say this is very reasonable for the job that they do. And I believe we've been happy with their collection efforts and correspondences with the district. So I think this is very reasonable request and part of the cost of us doing business. Any other board members?
I, I would agree. And Vicki, I think you said earlier that we're getting, or we're anticipating a 95% collection. And you had said, I think in a previous meeting that you've increased that because you've seen we're doing a little better than what you initially projected. Is that correct?
That is correct. Yes, I had in previous years, we had been at like a 93.5% collection rate. And then I was doing some historical data analysis, finding that each year our collections were greater than, and much more, greater than 93%. So I felt comfortable, you know, moving to 95% as, for the time being. Okay, so the next, this is the, an actual copy of the resolution that is on the agenda. So that you can see each tax collector's proposed salary. And like I said, over the five, four-year period, it's a total of around $4,000. So the next item on the agenda is the Erie County Technical School renovation and related resolutions. And I believe Mr. Berlin has some documents to share.
Yes, I'm going to, I'm going to share those here. All right. So you'll, you'll see the, you'll see the actual resolution when we get to it during the board, the, the balance of the meeting here. Can everyone see this PowerPoint now? Okay.
Yes.
So this has been an ongoing saga. This started, you know, over 15 years ago when I was a high school principal. I've sat through many meetings about renovating the tech school. I've talked about it a lot to the board. And the Cliff Notes version is that any type of renovation that the tech school enters into has to be funded by the 11 county schools that co-own the tech school and cooperate and co-fund the tech school. And there, there are articles of agreement that were drawn up when the tech school was established with the 11 county schools, not including Erie. And those, that, those articles of agreement say that there's a capital funding formula. And, and it's a large formula. I won't go into the, into the details, but the basis behind it is that the greater the propensity or ability of a school district to raise revenue means they have a greater stake in the tech school in, in any kind of capital investment. You know, so, so Mill Creek obviously has the largest tax base of the schools that feed Erie County Tech School. And we have a very small portion in comparison. So if there's a renovation, you know, we are not be, under the original agreement, we don't have to contribute as much as a Mill Creek would. So that's what this, this formula is. And the bottom line is Mill Creek is concerned that they can't afford their portion. And you'll see why here. Now I just get to the, get to the money shot. So. So, this is the bottom line. Mill Creek right now, if, if the formula isn't changed, they're on the hook for thirty-six percent of the proposed project. And right now, that proposed project is about thirty-two and a half million dollars. Um, so you can see, under the current formula, we'd be on the hook for about five percent of that. Union City, two-point-five percent. They have a much smaller uh blueprint and socioeconomic im, im, imprint than we do. And then, then Mill Creek is saying, well, hey, we really think this formula should be flattened out. We only wanna contribute about thirty percent. And they're using um uh, an argument that, you, you know, their, their number of students isn't that much greater than the rest of us, so the formula should reflect that. So, there's some calculations behind the scene here. Um, but if you look at the, the delta over here in the variance column, uh, you can see that Mill Creek's contribution goes down considerably by one-point-eight million, as does Fairview and Fort LeBeuf, the two next richest, largest tax bases in the, in Erie County. So, and then, and then the rest of us, smaller uh districts or districts that have rural populations with no business and, and less tax capability, we end up picking up their, their portion of the tab. Um, so you'll see a resolution tonight that's asking a couple questions. Uh, three, really. Do we agree in changing the formula right now to Mill Creek's proposal? And um, I, you know, I, I'll just come out and say that I, I would recommend against that. Uh, I, I, I really don't think it's fair, given the, the projections that Vicky went through tonight. Uh, you know, to, to increase the tax burden on our folks to give Mill Creek that has how many businesses, how many multimillion-dollar homes and dense residential neighborhoods with lots of, of tax parcels. I, I just don't think that's fair. So, that would be the first part of that resolution, and we can go through it again when we get there. Uh, the second question is, would we um consider changing the formula after this project is over? And I, I guess you could say yes to that. Um, there's no harm, no foul there. I, I don't think we should ever be close-minded, you know, when it comes to the future. Uh, so it probably doesn't hurt to say yes there. Um, but then the third question has to do with this additional eighty thousand dollars to certify the current plans. And um, just to back up, you know, for uh perspective, uh, about a year and a half ago, we all agreed, the eleven county school districts agreed to pay six hundred thousand dollars collectively. You know, our portion, I think, is about thirty-six thousand um to have blueprints, construction plans drawn up by the McLaughlin Lock uh Architectural Firm. So, the cost of that was six hundred thousand dollars. We have a nice stack of paper now, some nice plans to spend thirty-two million. But the next step in the process is we need to spend eighty thousand dollars uh to have those plans certified, either by the, uh, the Division of Labor and Industry at Pennsylvania or a subcontractor. And I think we're, they're looking at a subcontractor. So, they wanna know, are we willing to put our portion in the pot for that eighty thousand dollars? And I, I don't know that we can answer that question. I mean, if, if somebody said, Ken, what do you think? Yes or no? I'd probably say no right now, cuz until, until we know what Mill Creek's gonna do, I mean, say, say the school districts, and I, it only takes one out of the eleven to say, no, we're not gonna fund the pro, a project with this new proposed formula. Then it's off the table, whether it's us, Gerard, Union City, or it doesn't matter. It only takes one legally, and then the, the mark, the money can't be borrowed on those terms. So, until we know that question, and I can tell you what to answer that question is, it's gonna be no, because I've talked to some of the other superintendents. Um, and you know, they've been talking to their board, and they really don't, they, they don't feel good about this new formula. So, I think, I, I think those first two questions need to be answered, no, yes, and then it's this last one, I guess. Or, yeah, no, yes, and the last question, you know, spend the, the extra eighty thousand. I, I mean, we already have a six hundred thousand dollar stack of paper that we can't do anything with. I, I don't see why we should waste another eighty thousand until we know if Mill Creek's gonna get, get off the mark or not. Um, or if they're gonna come back with some kind of counterproposal. Um, so that's, that's what I had to present there. And again, we can go through that resolution, so you can visualize those.
Um, once we get to the, once we get to the work session, we'll go through those resolutions. So, board members don't feel the need to be taking notes, how am I supposed to vote, or what direction would we like to go? And then also during the meeting, we will also have time for discussion to remind us if, if the recommendations to support this item or not. So, we will discuss it further. Um, are there any questions right now for this um part of the finance committee meeting that we're still in?
I, I have a quick question, Andy.
Sure, Mr. Blazer.
Uh, so, Mr. Berlin, you know, you've given us the history that this has been a long time coming. And as you put it, if one of the eleven uh doesn't agree to their portion, the project can't go forward. Are we obligated? So, if the other ten uh say they're going to do it, is this like a union contract? We're obligated to throw in our percentage, and then knowing what the finances of all districts are gonna be looking like, what if this just doesn't happen? The school building falling apart? I'm not really familiar with the county technical school.
Okay, yep, all good questions, Mr. Blazer. Uh, so it would only take one of the eleven districts to vote no. So, if we voted no, uh, all bets are off, that, you know, the project's not gonna move forward. So, what, what might realistically happen if we vote no? Well, then Mill Creek has to decide, are we gonna throw in at the, the original articles of agreement, or, you know, they're thirty-six percent? Or, I, I've been, since I was the superintendent of record there several years ago, when they started looking at this, I, I was advocating for a smaller project done the guaranteed energy savings way, the way we did the middle school project. You know, I mean, we renovated eighty thousand square feet, uh, square foot building for four-point-three million dollars. The tech school's a hundred and twenty thousand square feet, and they're looking at a thirty-two million dollar project. It's, it's ridiculous. It's not energy um efficient, and it certainly isn't a, a good stewardship of taxpayer money. So, I, I, I mean, I'm thinking that the discussion might be ripe after this gets shot down, which I'm, you know, if we don't shoot it down, I think somebody else probably will, will likely do that. Um, then I think the negotiations, you know, we go back to the, the tech school board uh and say, hey, look, maybe we can't do thirty-two million, but can we do fifteen million? And can we do it half of that through a guaranteed energy savings project, rather than involving an architect for all the mechanicals? Um, when we know that, you know, those types of projects uh go a long ways to pay for themselves over the, over the, their lifetime. Um, so will a building fall down out there? Uh, no, but I think they're gonna be getting into costly HVAC renovations. So, they're gonna be fixing equipment that's already, well, I know a lot of the HVAC, HVAC stuff is there from the late sixties. It's original equipment. That building had a facelift in nineteen ninety-six. And a lot of the labs were updated. So, if you go there, it looks nice, but they're gonna start uh ru, running into uh mechanical problems. So, you're, you're gonna be throwing good money after bad is what's gonna happen without a real long-term spending plan, which doesn't make any sense to me. Uh, I would think you'd wanna begin with the end in mind and d, design a renovation project that everyone can agree to and can afford at their price point, and that um is comprehensive in what it's gonna do for the building over a thirty or thirty-five-year period.
Any other comments from the board? I certainly tend to agree with the administration's recommendation of a no, yes, no uh when the time comes. Anything else regarding this uh VOTEC project?
Andy, this is Julie. I have a question.
Sure, Mrs. Pekovic.
Uh, Mr. Berlin, do you know, are there any grants for VOTEC schooling in our state or anything out there, state money-wise, that would be able to contribute towards this amount of money for whatever kind of price it costs? If it, you know, the sixteen million or thirty-two or whatever?
Yeah, that, we were, the superintendents, we went down this road about a year and a half ago when this surfaced again. And we had a meeting with Dan Loughlin and Pat Harkins and Michelle Brooks, and we had, it was a big roundtable at the tech school, uh, the one afternoon. And that's kind of what led us down the road of these traditional plans. Cuz they said, well, if we don't have a cost and a, a solid plan, we can't help you pursue grants. Um, but, I mean, be, between now and then, obviously, every, the world has kind of gone into a pretty depressed state economically, so th, there are no grant monies, and we don't have the political will right now to help us chase any type of funding for that project. But setting that aside, it would be unprecedented for the state of Pennsylvania and some legislatures, legislators to get money to renovate a singular tech school. Um, that would be like the equivalent of what, you know, the bailout of the Erie School District, the bailout of Allentown, the bailout of Reading that happened similarly. Um, I, I just don't think it would happen for the tech school because it's nowhere near the size of a large metropolitan center. You know, that's nine hundred kids versus eleven thousand kids in the school city of Erie. So, I, politically, I don't think you would attract the dollars. Um, and, you know, I, I do remember saying that to the group, you know, not that I told you so, but I, I cautioned against um, you know, rubbing the, the genie bottle and hoping for a wish uh to, to renovate the building. And I mean, that's kinda where we're at right now.
The other, okay, thank you. The other comment I had was I noticed that the, the new plan they wanted to come up with percentage-wise, I saw that the Fort LeBeuf School District money was gonna go, go down. But my question is, they have the casino revenue to back up their tax base and some other things, correct? So, I was just wondering, shouldn't they go up? Maybe they should pay for it.
I notice Mr. Berlin's not gonna bite on that one, Mrs.
Yeah, I'm, I'm gonna leave that one alone.
Mrs. Lee, did you have a comment? Thank you, Mrs. Pekovic.
Yeah, I was just gonna add some additional commentary, because I was at the meeting with Mr. Berlin where I saw the presentation from Mill Creek. It was very interesting to me as a, as a new board member for ECTS. Um, you know, I've only been there for a couple of months now that um, i, in, in talk with the rest of the board, you know, everybody has known their price for well over a year and what their commitment was. Um, I found it very interesting that Mill Creek, all of a sudden, decided to put this proposal together one month before bidding was supposed to start. Um, so they've, they've had a significant amount of time to disagree with the amount of money that was proposed that they pay um and agreed to. So, that was very striking to me. Um, and during the presentation, there was really no great data points as to why Mill Creek no longer wanted to, um, you know, fund their portion, or at least a percentage um that was expected. Um, you know, I was hoping to see, you know, a lot of different numbers explaining why they couldn't pay for it. Um, the only real answer that we got was that their general fund budget was, I believe, and Mr. Berlin, correct me, was over allocated, and that was really it. Um, and that they just wanted to push these changes along. Um, you know, Fort LeBeuf and Fairview had jumped on to this as well, because their amounts would have been lowered with this new proposal. So, of course, they were in agreement, but um I, for me as a board member, I would say no to this proposal. It's not fair to our taxpayers to push this on um to our residents when they had agreed to this a while ago.
Thank you, Mrs. Lee. Uh, without objection, that will bring us to the close of our finance committee meeting. Um, I would like to, at this point, um, I, I will call for public comment twice. The first time is going to be right now. Um, if there is anyone that would like to address the board regarding the finance committee meeting items, and I would request only those people that attended the meeting in its entirety uh would ask to be heard. Otherwise, you can make your comments during the work session. So, right now, is there anyone that has a comment uh regarding the finance committee meeting? Please use the Q and A to submit your name and address. Again, these are questions related to the finance committee meeting. Seeing none, we will now make a call for anyone that wants to address the board this evening that is not already on the agenda. If you would put your name and address in the Q and A feature, you'll have five minutes to address the board. Um, if anyone would like to address the board, now would be the time. This is for the work session. Um, and while any citizens may be signing up, Mr. Berlin will go down through the agenda, and for school reports, will we have school reports for next week?
Yeah, so for, for, for next week, um, the principals are gonna update the board on how our, our remote initiatives are going. Both the, the, the teacher-driven ones and our cyber academy. We've had some success there, and some, some students are struggling. Uh, so we wanna update you on that, and what we're doing to, what we're doing to intervene with the students that are, they're having a hard time. So, that'll be next week.
Okay, thank you very much. Uh, it appears that there are no additional citizens that have uh dr, signed up to address the board. We do have one citizen on the agenda tonight who'll be permitted to speak for ten minutes, and that's Mr. Danny Carter. Mr. Carter, you have ten minutes. Mr. Carter.
Oh, there we go.
Okay, good evening, good evening. Yes, go ahead.
Uh, Danny Carter, one-four-three-seven-zero, Lowville Street, Wattsburg, PA, one-six-four-four-two. So, I got a couple comments on the budget. Um, I just figured I got ten minutes, so I won't need it all. Um, one, did you guys see these numbers when you voted for the sports complex? I mean, cuz it doesn't look like the operating costs are really where they need to be to be spending that type of money where the fields were playable, for sure. A little upkeep would have been phenomenal, but I mean, I'm not gonna say the fields don't look great, but at the cost of what? You're raising taxes for people that, as of now, it's hard. It's hard. I mean, you're gonna, you're talking, yeah, it may be fifty, seventy dollars a year, but so, to some people on a fixed income, that fifty, seventy dollars a year is the make it or break it stage over the course of years. So, I don't know. I just think money is being spent more. It, it's, everybody's solution to everything is raise taxes, raise taxes, rage millage, rage the millage. That's fine and great, but people's salary don't raise that fast. You know, not everybody gets a raise as fast as that. I mean, I know people that have been working the same job for five years and haven't had a raise. So, I mean, it's, that's not the solution. Everything is raise taxes, cuz that's what everybody wants to do, and the only one being hurt is the taxpayer themselves. So, the other thing with the voting for, I would agree with the no, not the no, yes, no, but I would say no, no, no across the board, because the only thing you're gonna do is if you get Mill Creek to lower it in two years, five years, whatever. So, in the next ten years, when they wanna do something else, now you just flip the bill onto the taxpayers for us, because, well, they already got it lowered. So, yeah, yeah, let's, let's have another renovation, because we don't have to pay as much this time. So, I would say no, no, no. Let the other schools decide what they would wanna do, and then go from there, because why put yourself in a predicament that you may not need to? I mean, if you say no, and then another school says yes, you get outvoted, you get outvoted. But as I look at it, is don't try and set yourself up to spend more money down the road just because you may not be on the board, or you may not be the super, whatever. Don't set the, the future up for failure, because now they're on the hot seat for spending more money. So, that's my input on that. Um, the other thing I have a, uh, more of a concern with is if the tech schools were going to, the tech kids were going to school last week, how come the IEP students couldn't go to their one day a week at the school? I mean, that's the whole reason for them to have it during the whole COVID situation was so they could get that learning support hands-on when they need it. I mean, it's only one day, yeah, but that one day is, for some of them, it's a huge help, because that's the whole reason they're in that program to begin with, because obviously, they need some sort of help regardless on what the situation is, but they shouldn't have been able, they should, if the others' kids were allowed to go to school last week, there was no reason for them not to be able to. I think you guys kind of, I'm not saying you guys in general, but just as a whole, that should have been thought out a little differently. I had asked a few of the teachers why they weren't, and they said it really wasn't their call, blah, 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 blah. We weren't in the red, blah, 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 blah. Once I seen the tech kids going to school, there shouldn't have been no issues at all for them to be able to go for their one day. So, that's that. And the last thing I have is more of a comment, statement. I don't know how we wanna take it. So, for state law, um, if a person or persons request a special meeting about a person, they request a special meeting to the board, and the board denies that person a special meeting, they can single out and, and um, a person or persons, they can single them out at a board meeting, because that's They can single them out at a board meeting because that's the state law, because if you say no to them having a closed door meeting, then you're not giving them the opportunity to bring their situation to light. So as a state law, that's the reason why. If they requested it, you guys deny it, that's fine. But once you denied it and they bring it to a board meeting, they are allowed to speak on it regardless on if it is singling out a person, board member, staff member, Jen or whatever, it doesn't matter. If they bring it, if they ask a request and you deny it, they are allowed to bring it to a board meeting and they're allowed to specify a person or persons by state laws. So I just want to let you guys know that because if somebody does request, I'm not saying I am, but if somebody does request a special board meeting and you guys deny them, don't be surprised when they come to the next board meeting and they single out a person of whatever, for whatever reasons. Because again, that's a state law which would supersede your guys' bylaws because state, you know, is a little higher up in the district. So I just want to let you guys know that. So that way, when other people or persons have issues with board, staff, intendants, administrators, whatever, if you deny them the right to have a special meeting, then they are allowed to bring it up. And I'm gonna make sure people do know their laws and their rules because I see a lot of stuff that you guys personally, I've seen, not seeing the board, all of you, but I know I've had some issues that kind of get pushed to the side. So other than that, that's all I have. Thank you for your time, and I hope you all have a great day.
Thank you for your comments, Mr. Carter. And regarding the last item you had just discussed, we'll certainly look to our school that are to give us guidance on how we run our meetings. So thank you for those comments and we'll definitely take that under advisement and follow her lead. So thank you for that.
Thank you.
No other citizens have signed up to address the board. We will move on with our agenda. And the next item is the superintendent's report. The chair recognizes superintendent of schools, Mr. Berlin for his report. Mr. Berlin.
Hey, thanks, Dr. Pushcheck. I think Mrs. Kelly might be sharing the screen. There you go. Thank you. All right, so just kind of give everyone an update of where we're at based on the information that's available to the school districts from the Erie County Health Department, the State Health Department and the Department of Education. There was a development last week and the Secretary of Health for Pennsylvania and the government came out and the Department of Ed. And they're rethinking, you know, the instructional model recommendations during substantial spread. And we still are in substantial spread, which was previously referred to as as being in the red. We've been in this area now for a good month and a half. But the the state is starting to look at students that have been out of school for long periods of time. Now, we've fortunately been able to have periods of time where our students have been in school this fall and into the early winter. Some schools, low like Erie, have been out at least a majority of the students since last March. So the state primarily came out and said, look, even in substantial spread, please consider bringing elementary students back into the school buildings. And they did back that up with a meta-analysis, which is basically a summary of a bunch of research summaries showing that children young in that ten to fourteen age bracket and lower have lower susceptibility and lower transmission rates. Of course, that and you know, that came from the state. They shared that with us. So this new chart on this slide, you can see that in substantial, they're saying, consider at least a blended learning model. The important thing to to state here to remember is that there, these are not mandates. These are only recommendations from the state. They've made it abundantly clear last week in the press conference about this that the instructional model that each school district chooses to pursue is a local school district decision. So how we want to educate our students, that that's up really to the to the board here. Just to put those metrics in perspective, in fact, if I just back up one, these are the magic numbers, right? Incident rate for one hundred thousand greater than or equal to a hundred, and then the positivity rate greater than equal to ten percent. And you can see for the the most recent data available, seven day look back period, we're still well above those numbers, and that's why we're in substantial spread. But that's for all of Erie County, not for the school district, you know, all the the residents within our school district borders. And I have a little bit of data there in a minute. We we started tracking this information early on this year, and the state is now saying we have to, when you consider whether or not you have enough cases to warrant a school closing for a deep cleaning or for a temporary pause or temporary quarantine, they they want you to look at numbers, number of positive cases per building. And of course, we've been kind of collecting data in a number of areas because I I think they're giving you a range, right? So if you if you look at this slide here, they're saying if you have, if you're in substantial spread, your area close school for three to seven days, do a deep clean, so on, so on and so forth. If you have two to four students in the same building or not household contacts. So that's why we're tracking this data. And they give you a range two to four. I think you need to consider, is it, you know, two household contacts? Is it four household contacts? Is it one non-household contact? And so, you know, there's a couple of different dynamics there that leads to that range. And it's kind of a preponderance of looking at those case numbers and how they manifest themselves in a building or among several buildings to make that call that, yeah, we need to make, take a pause and clean the building and give everyone a little bit of distance to calm down the spread. So I mean, we're just back to school, so our our numbers are pretty clean here. I just want to thank all the parents, like over the break, they were contacting us. And that's why I do have some numbers in this chart, even though a lot of this was during the vacation period, the holiday break, parents did do a good job of contacting us and saying, hey, you know, my son's symptomatic or I'm waiting for a test or my husband got it. So that's why we have some numbers here. But we're all within a safe operating margin according to the recommendations from the state. And then this is just that chart that's published weekly by the Department of Health. And you can see we we've been in substantial spread for weeks now. I I thought this was interesting. If you get the Erie paper, this was in the paper last week. Dr. Nadworthy, he works for the Allegheny Health Network at St. Vincent. He's been meeting with the superintendents and the Erie County Health Department pandemic coordinators once a week. We all get together and he's been sharing this data with us. And this was printed in the newspaper, as I mentioned. But you can kind of see what happened over that, that the the reaction to Thanksgiving. We had a big spike. And that was reflected in the DNA samples from the sewage plant. Which is, it's, you know, they're they're tracking both numbers there and comparing them. It's, it seems to be an accurate proxy. So if you run that forward and up and and look at Erie County as a whole, and then you put, look at our numbers, you can see that, you know, these charts roughly mirror that shape. So if I if I back up, you can see here's that spike after Thanksgiving. And then you can see here's the spike after Thanksgiving, and you can see that we had a small spike. We hit a little over fifty cases and and we did have over a hundred students quarantining that at that point. We had about fifteen students waiting on testing. So that's when we decided to close through the break and through the first week of January because of the the ten day incubation period of the virus, wanted to make sure that we were past that to the greatest extent possible for before bringing the students in. And if I juxtapose these two charts together, you can you can kind of see how they mirror each other. So you know, this is the data that our team is using to decide, you know, is it safe to operate? What's going on around us? What's going on within the district? And then we just color coded this chart so you can kind of see since the beginning of the school year, the first couple of weeks, we didn't have any data like they're giving it to us now. So as soon as they started providing the district data, we started tracking it in this chart. But you can see that in the summer, when we decided to open in the yellow, the spread was really high at that point, and we thought yellow might be the safest to see what was going on. And indeed, that did seem to be the case. And the board decided to bring the students back, K twelve. This blip here, these K through eight remotes, remember that was driven by just two teachers, to only two positive cases. But they were, they exposed a total of thirteen staff. So we didn't have enough staff to keep the building open. Otherwise, we would have stayed open. And then you can see, just like those charts peak around the December fourteenth period. That's when it kind of peaked in Erie County and within our district borders, and that's when we went remote. So that's just kind of a little perspective of how we're kind of following the trends and and helping us decide what instructional model to use. This was the latest data they had for us for the week analysis, nine hundred and twelve cases. And then this is the total cases for that previous week. And again, zone four includes a little more than our area, thirteen point six percent of those cases for the week. And then this this risk table, I I think this is telling us, especially because we get into winter athletics here. So this is just saying, if you have fifty people at a gathering, which is about what we have at a basketball game under the COVID participant restrictions, it's about a seventy-two percent chance that someone's gonna be positive. But that's why it's important to spread everyone out in the gym. Everyone's wearing masks and so on. So I I'll just pause right there.
Are there any questions from the board or any discussion from the board regarding this part of Mr. Berlin's report?
Dr. Pushcheck, this is Amanda. I just have one.
Yes, Mrs. Farrell.
Is there anything being looked at or has there been or can there be anything else looked at if we would have to go back to or that we could reconsider a different yellow face? Or are we past the point of being able to look at what a yellow face option might be? As question number one. And then question number two, I remember really early on when these conversations started, there was some conversation about why why our teachers couldn't do live streaming with students at home. And I was just hoping that you could remind me of what that was.
So it just, I mean, I think at this point, the principals are dealing with this every day. I think they probably could provide some better perspective to some of those questions. They're good questions.
And they can be answered next week if that makes it easier, but just wanted to get them out there. Thank you.
I just give the principals a chance if they wanna, if they have any thoughts they want to share.
I can jump in real quick, Mr. Berlin. This is Mr. Miller.
Yes, Mr. Miller, thank you.
To answer those questions, you know, I don't think any of us feel like our current remote learning plan is is ideal, you know. I don't think any plan that we've seen is ideal. We've, you know, we've looked at different plans and we'll certainly keep looking at different plans. You know, we've considered some different options. You know, I know, you know, one of them, we consider that some schools are doing is is a hybrid style learning. Where, you know, our kids come one day or two days a week and then they're home the other days. And, you know, the teachers either give them work or, you know, in some cases, they're actually remoting into the classrooms on their off days, even though they're not in there in person. But, you know, I I can speak for the high school, just saying that, you know, really with the A B schedule, that would put most kids in front of, you know, their teachers one day a week. And then the other days, you know, they would be with with one of their other teachers. And then the days that they're not there, they'd be doing work from those teachers. So you know, just to see your teacher one day a week is not ideal to me, even though it is in person. You know, we're we're seeing, you know, I I guess it earlier, we're seeing a we we are looking at different options because, you know, we're seeing a high, pretty high failure rate in in some of our learning. Especially the cyber, the district cyber learning. And I think we'll go over that a little bit more next week. But, you know, there's just problems with, you know, like if if a kid, if a student's sick and we're doing every other day learning, where the person's in there every other, students in in the class, you know, one day a week, they miss that one week's worth of instruction. That's gonna really put them behind. Yeah, and I'm speaking for the high school. I know, you know, in the elementary, middle schools, they probably see their kids a little bit more often. But then, you know, one of the reasons why we went to the A B schedule is because of the the way the brain learns and, you know, how you give it little pieces at a time and over time, it'll it'll retain more information. You know, if we go to one day a week and a teacher's trying to cram a whole week's worth of information into, you know, one in-person session, then I'm just afraid like the retention level is not going to be very high. And, you know, the the learning would suffer even more. So, you know, that that's just speaking from the high school point of view. I'll let Mr. Paris or Mrs. Mrs. Barboni speak from theirs.
Yeah, just, this is Mr. Paris. Just, can you hear me okay?
Yes, go ahead, Mr. Paris.
Just to piggyback on what Mr. Miller was saying, I mean, this is kind of the same things. You know, we've had some conversations with teachers about both, you know, doing a kind of like a hybrid and a remote, and most of them are pretty comfortable with having all the kids there. They get concerned is when we do go remote and they lose all, they lose a lot of kids, you know, they're not signing in, they're making every effort to get those kids involved. And so if they they've come to school one day, they're remote next, they're afraid they're just gonna lose them even more. Even with all the interventions that they're doing, making phone calls and and trying to get them involved. So that's a big concern for for the teachers. You know, losing those kids a little bit more than what the area are.
Hi, this is Mrs. Barboni. I don't know if you can, can you hear me okay?
We can. Please go ahead, Mrs. Barboni.
Okay, hi. I'm just kind of echoing what the other principal said as well. At the elementary level, and we know it's all been proven and is important for students to have that hands-on interaction. And I think, you know, when we go back to at the start of COVID in the spring and we sent home a lot of paper packets, we saw there really wasn't an increase of of student learning. It was more, here's, you know, some some work that we're doing and students were trying to do that on their own and really struggling without that direct instruction from the teachers. Obviously, the point is to have them in person when we can. But when we can't, at least when we are remote, the teachers are able to have those Zoom sessions with the kids. They are taking time to have meetings with them during the day, morning meetings, times for question, time for interaction. If we were to do a hybrid, the problem for us is that then you have half of the class there that the teachers are are working with and supporting, but the other half that is at home, if they are asking questions, especially at this young age, I I just don't see how the teachers, and they've expressed that concern to me as well, how will they be able to work with the class that's in front of them, the students that are in front of them and interact with them and then also attend to students online who are asking questions or needing their help and support. So when they're all there in person, there is more attention and or if they were all there online, then they can devote that attention to all of them as well. I think splitting like that for us just doesn't give them the hands-on approach that the teachers need and their direct instruction. And that's just so important at at this age to find a way to to give them that instruction the best that we can.
And Mrs. Farrell, I I know you asked about coming in on the, you know, remoting into the classes. I forget exactly how you put it, but I I think our internet, go ahead.
Oh, I'm sorry. I was just gonna say, and to clarify that, I I I believe that some districts are doing where students can either be sitting in the classroom or sitting at home and have the same. And yes, I I understand that our internet in this area is far from from ideal. But I guess I just wondered, you know, has that been looked at at all that if there's households that do have good enough internet, does that help the numbers in the classroom at all? And I also understand there's probably a fine line between looking at something like that and the cyber program that's in place. But I just wondered if that had been looked at or considered. Thank you.
Yeah, I, well, I, I mean, if I'm hearing the principals, you know, and the feedback we've gotten from the staff in, in, in dealing with all of this. If we can have the kids in this, in, in the classrooms safely for stretches of period with just some short targeted closures. We feel that that's better. But that's not to say that we wouldn't consider a hybrid schedule where the kids just come one or two days a week. Because say we get a big flare up here and then next month, that may be the best model. So it might be something we have to transition to and I, and I think we'll take that as it comes. It's not impossible. I mean, 50% of our kids do have a cellular hotspot that only downloads it, you know, one to three megabytes per second. So I would have some concerns about offering robust streamed live lessons to those who have high-speed internet, knowing that the ones that just have our federally funded hotspots can't get it. You know, that could be problematic. So, and you just have to look at it as a whole. So could we do a yellow? Could we do a hybrid? Absolutely. And I, I think when we get there, we'll, we'll know. And it's going to be better to keep the kids coming a couple of days a week, keep them spread out so we can hopefully get to the end of the year.
Thank you. And I, I don't want it to seem that I'm allocating one way or the other. I just, these are questions as a board member. I've also been hearing. So I just, I think this is the place for that to be discussed and be publicly shared of, you know, what thoughts are from all angles and, you know, we sit as parents and board members and obviously have one perspective, but very much appreciate what the perspective is of those of you that are in the schools every day too. So thank you for that.
Thank you, Mrs. Farrell.
Hi, this is Julie. I have a question about that.
Mrs. Pekovic, yes, go ahead.
Just to go off what Amanda said, because I think I just had an idea with that because I know I teach in a hybrid. And honestly, as a teacher, I feel much safer only having eight or nine kids in my class every day than having 22. Because some kids are just remote, so that kind of cut down on the amount of kids that had to come to school. I think it's safer for teachers and the students, and it slows down any spread or any kind of issues. But nothing's ideal right now. It's a pandemic. The whole world's trying to survive education in a pandemic. So yes, Monday through Friday coming to school full-time, of course, that's what we want. But if it gets bad and we need to make a decision, I think coming to school once or twice or three times a week is better than zero with less kids. But also going off of what Amanda said, I wonder if there's a way to find out through a survey or something that how many people in our district do have good internet? And that if it got bad, instead of assigning children that they're coming to school Mondays and Wednesdays or only Tuesday, Thursdays. Are there many families who have good enough internet that would say, my kids will stay home and do live streaming? And the kids that don't have the good internet, those half of kids, who knows how it would work out, would be able to go into the building and you'd have a lot less children. So that's maybe something to think about as far as like internet. And I think that's it. I just want to mention that, those two options. Thanks.
Thank you, Mrs. Pekovic. Any other comments from the board? I would like to thank the principals for their input tonight. That's always helpful. As other board members have said, to hear from the people that are in the building. So we certainly appreciate that. Okay, Mr. Berlin, anything else for your report tonight?
I know that's, that's all I have for tonight. Thanks, Dr. Pushak.
And Mr. Berlin, on behalf of the board, thank you for your continued efforts to keep up on these numbers, to keep meeting with your team. Again, like Mrs. Pekovic said, this is, you know, there's no superintendent COVID-19 pandemic training or principal training. So we know that we're, we're all trying to do the best we can. We know that people have different ideas and we respect that. And we know that some families struggle more than others and we respect that. And we're truly trying to do the best that we can for all of our students. And it really comes down to, we're really trying to balance that safety with education. And sometimes it's, it's a fine line. Thank you for your continued efforts, Mr. Berlin, and thank your team as well.
Yep, I'll do so. Thanks.
That brings us to the business administrators' report. The chair recognizes Mrs. Vicky Bendig for her report. Mrs. Bendig, you're back on.
Thank you, Mr. President. For tonight, I have some reports. General Fund Treasurers Report Cash in the Bank as of December 31st, 2020. The year-to-date budget to actual report will be ready for next week's meeting. Capital Projects Treasurers Report. Cash in that account as of December 30th, 2020, $30,301.62. And the Cafeteria Fund Treasurers Report Cash in that account as of December 31st, 2020, $177,276.69. I do have both November and December's cafeteria profit and loss reports for this month. If you'll remember back in December, we only had one meeting. It was on the 7th of December. There was a close timeframe to be able to have November numbers ready. So for the period ending November 30th, 2020, our monthly net profit was $3,804.18, which brings our year-to-date profit to $12,884.59. We had $65,000 in revenue, approximately $60,000 came from the state and federal subsidy. And then for December, the period ending 12/31/2020, the profit for the month was $5,977.07, which brings our year-to-date profit to $18,861.66. So the ability to provide weekend meals to our students and the ability to provide meals to our students when we are not in school and to have everyone eat free has certainly helped the bottom line in the cafeteria and to be able to offer better food and options to our students. Moving on to the bill lists for the month. Exhibit A1, our checks already written. These checks are everything that we've written since the last board meeting, which was December 7th. So each Friday, we've cut checks that, for items that were due during that period of time. And that report totals 500, sorry, 479,000, There's two separate accounts there. I would like to point out at the bottom of that report, there is a section that is for the cyber, cyber charter schools. The cyber charter school bills for the month of December was $79,482.40 of that $559,000. So just, just to bring that to everyone's attention. Exhibit B2, our checks already written for the cafeteria. This includes our bill to the nutrition group, some sales and some service calls and some ECO Lab, which is some products that we use in our cafeterias for sanitary sanitation. Total amount for the, for the month, $27,998.11. The Seneca High School activity account has a total in it of $73,975.23. We'll have more reports ready for next week's meeting.
Are there any questions for Mrs. Bendig regarding her business administrators' report?
Dr. Pushak, it's Amanda. I just have one quick one.
Yes, Mrs. Farrell.
Can you remind us how long the program runs through with the cafeteria for the free breakfast and lunch program?
Free breakfast and lunch has been extended through June 30th of 2021. So I know that previously we had announced that they would be, it would be extended through December if funding was available. And then during the period prior to December, they have extended it through the end of the school year. So we will continue on the same model until then.
Okay, thank you.
I have a quick question as well.
Yes, Mr. Blazer.
So Ms. Bendig, the CARES Act, I know that some of the funds from the CARES Act did go to charter schools or is awarded. Do those go directly to them or is that some of those checks you were talking about? Does the money come to us that we then have to provide to charter schools?
The charter school bills that I mentioned are just our regular fees for our students that live, that are residents of our district that are attending a, a charter or a cyber charter school. It has nothing to do with CARES Act funding or anything like that. If there is funding available to the charter schools, I'm not sure how they're getting it.
So all the CARES money that you previously reported on is directly to Wattsburg for our own usage?
That is correct.
Yeah, those, those, those cyber charters, those are private entities. Kids go there, then they send us the bill and we have to pay it. We have no say in the matter.
It's Josh. Does the charter schools, there's no oversight on their, the amount they charge per student? Each school's different?
No, they, each charter school is, there is a calculation that I do every year at the beginning, at the end of the year. It's called a PDE 363. It's a cyber charter, charter school tuition calculation that calculates based on our expenditures and the allowable exclusions from those expenditures per pupil based on a certain period of time. And you divide it out and whatever the tuition rate is, that's what they pay. So XYZ Charter School and ABC Charter School and Pennsylvania Virtual Charter School, they all pay per student the same exact tuition rate. And it's published through a calculation that the state has designated for us to do so.
The primary criticism of that formula is it, it's, it's based off of a brick and mortar school district like us with all of the inherent costs. So if, you know, if the rate turns out to be $12,000 per student or $22,000 per special ed student, that's as if that cyber charter had three buildings, 25 buses, you know, 35 cafeteria workers, 18 custodians, parking lots to plow, all of that, but they don't. They have a teacher, they have a computer system and they send each kid a, a computer worth about $300. So they've got about, well, we know what it is, but we're doing it right now with our cyber academy. For $2,000 to $3,000 a student, we can do what they charge us, $12,000 to $22,000. I'll get off my soapbox. Sorry, but.
Any other questions for the business administrator for her report tonight? Thank you, Mrs. Bendig. There is nothing under legal advisement at this point for our agenda for next week for the regular meeting. So at this time, the chair recognizes Mr. Marty Pushak for finance. Mr. Pushak.
Thank you, Mr. President. We have at the moment five items for the agenda next week. F1, regarding the general fund budget for the 21-22 school year. We'll be asking the board to approve the accelerated budget opt-out resolution certifying that the tax rate will remain within the inflation index and therefore no need to comply with the Act 1 accelerated budget procedures for the 21-22 general fund budget as outlined.
Any questions regarding F1 for next week? This was the majority of our finance committee meeting. So we're just going to vote whether or not we will just remain under that Act 1 index. Hearing none, F1 will be on your agenda for consideration for next week.
F2, we'll be looking to approve the monthly budgetary transfers from budget versus actual report from the business manager.
Any further discussion or questions regarding F2, the budgetary transfer? Hearing none, F2 will be on the, the agenda for your consideration next week.
And F3, regarding budgetary amendments, we'll be looking to approve the budgetary amendments as outlined.
Any questions or discussion on F3, the budgetary amendment? Hearing none, F3 will be on the agenda next week for your consideration.
F4, we'll be looking to approve a resolution to set the compensation rate for the collection of real estate taxes levied by the district as per Section 36.1 of the local tax collection law to be effective during the term of office for the elected tax collectors commencing on January 1st, 2022.
Any question or discussions on F4, the compensation for tax collectors? Again, extensively discussed at our finance committee meeting. Hearing none, F4 will be on the agenda next week for your consideration.
Then at the moment, finally, F5, I will be looking to approve the district's use of the IRS mileage rate of 56 cents a mile for business travel effective January 1, 2021, as outlined.
Any questions on the IRS mileage rate? Hearing none, F5 will be on the agenda for next week. So that will be all five finance items on your agenda for next week.
That's all I have at this time, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Pushak. The chair recognizes Mr. Josh Paris for Buildings and Grounds. Mr. Paris.
I have no items. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Paris. The chair recognizes Mr. Jeremy Blazer for Personnel. Mr. Blazer.
Thank you, Mr. President. Five items under Personnel for next week. P1 is to approve the names listed as Kelly Substitute additions for Kelly Educational Staffing Substitute List.
Any questions or discussion on P1, the Kelly Substitute additions? Hearing none, P1 will be on the agenda next week for your consideration.
P2 is to approve the tuition reimbursements as outlined in the attachment.
Any questions or discussion regarding P2, the tuition reimbursement? Hearing none, P2 will be on the agenda next week for your consideration.
P3, to accept the resignation for purpose of retirement of Donald Pierce effective January 5th, 2021.
Any questions regarding P3, the resignation?
Dr. Pushak, this is Julie.
Mrs. Pekovic.
I believe Mr. Pierce's name is misspelled there, but also I'm very upset that he's resigning. My kids have always loved having him. I know he needs to do what he needs to do, but just want to thank him for all his years.
I concur, Mrs. Pekovic. He's a wonderful educator, coach, and all-around good person.
Agreed.
Really wish him, we really wish him the best. Any further discussion on the resignation? So with the correction spelling to his name, P3 will be on the agenda next week for your consideration.
P4, appointments to approve the appointments listed below.
Any discussion on the two appointments listed under P4? Hearing none, P4 will be on your agenda next week for consideration.
And P5, a leave request to approve the following leave requests as listed below.
Any discussion or questions on the leave request listed under P5? And note that they do go on to page three, so three altogether. Hearing none, P5 will be on the agenda for next week for your consideration. Thank you, Mr. Blazer.
Thank you, Mr. President.
The chair recognizes Mrs. Amanda Farrell for Policies. Mrs. Farrell.
Thank you, Dr. Pushak. One item, PL1, Policy First Readings, to approve the first reading of the following policies. Policy 103, Discrimination Title IX Sexual Harassment Affecting Students. Policy 203, Immunizations and Communicable Diseases. Policy 209, Health Examinations and Screenings. Policy 218.3, Discipline of Student Convicted Adjudicated of Sexual Assault. Policy 317.1, Educator Misconduct. Policy 705, Facilities and Workplace Safety. Policy 803, School Calendar. Policy 824, Maintaining Professional Adult-Student Boundaries. Policy 904, Public Attendance at School Events. And Policy 907, School Visitors.
Thank you, Mrs. Farrell. And just to remind the board and everyone in attendance tonight, these are all policies that are either mandated by Pennsylvania or are becoming recommended for liability purposes of the district. So is there any discussion or questions regarding the first readings of the policies as listed? Hearing none, these first readings will be on the agenda next week for your consideration. Thank you, Mrs. Farrell.
Welcome. Thank you.
The chair recognizes Mrs. Julie Pekovic for curriculum. Mrs. Pekovic.
Thank you, Dr. Pushcheck. I have three items under curriculum to be put on for next week's agenda. C1, to approve homebound instruction for a student anticipated December eighth, two thousand twenty through February sixth, two thousand twenty-one.
Any discussion or questions about the homebound instruction request under C1? Hearing none, C1, homebound instruction will be on the agenda next week for your consideration.
Thank you. C2, to approve continued academic services of LearnWell for hospitalized Seneca High School student.
Any discussion or questions regarding C2, the approval of academic services? Hearing none, that will be on the agenda next week for your consideration.
Thank you. And C3, to approve the revised preliminary contract for Title I services between Erie City School District and Wattsburg Area School District for twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one school year as outlined.
Any questions or discussion on the revised preliminary contract for Title I services agreement? Hearing none, C3 will be on the agenda next week for your consideration. Thank you, Mrs. Pekovic.
Thank you, Dr. Pushcheck.
Chair recognizes Mrs. Tara Pound for Technology. Mrs. Pound.
Thank you. I have nothing for next week.
Thank you, Mrs. Pound. Chair recognizes Mrs. Nicole Lee for Transportation.
I thank you. I also have no items for next week.
And I thank you, Mrs. Lee. The chair recognizes Mr. Sean Mattson for Athletic and Extracurricular. Mr. Mattson.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have two items for next week's agenda and under Athletic and Extracurricular. AE1 is the, to approve the general help list, to approve the addition of Ryan Dinar to the game help list for the two thousand twenty, two thousand twenty-one school year.
Any question or discussion on AE1 game help list? Hearing none, AE1 will be on the agenda next week for your consideration.
And then I have AE2, the athletic resignations, to accept the following resignations of the coaches listed below.
Any questions or discussion on the athletic resignations listed under AE2? Hearing none, those will be on the agenda next week, so both of your items are good to go. Thank you, Mr. Mattson.
Thank you, Mr. President.
On your agenda, we'll have one item to declare surplus items next week on the agenda. Any discussion or questions regarding those surplus items? Hearing none, those will be on the agenda for next week. The chair recognizes Mrs. Nicole Lee for two Erie County Technical School resolutions. Mrs. Lee.
Thank you. Yes, so the first one is ECT dash one. It is what we had talked about earlier tonight where Mill Creek wants to modify the proposal. So the motion would be to approve Mill Creek Township's School District modification of Erie County Technical School Resolution on the questionnaires outlined next week.
Mrs. Kelly, can you pull that up so everyone can see those three questions?
To remind the board, this, there's three questions here and then we'll have another resolution discussing the proposed roundabout by the VOTEC school. So here's the three questions, Mrs. Lee. Are those correct?
Those are correct, yes.
Yeah, so I, I mean, we, we just need to come to some board consensus. I mean, I, I know for sure from an administrative perspective, question one, I would recommend no. You know, question two, you could go either way. There were some good points made by Mr. Carter this evening for and against that one. And question number three, I, I mean, if you ask me, I would say no because I, I don't think we want to throw more money at this project till we know how it's going to be funded. So I guess it's that, i- if I'm unsure anywhere, it's that second question.
I'm, I'm wondering if, I'm wondering how do we vote on three questions with one resolution? That's, that's my question.
Well, that was a thought I had is maybe we just decide question one and leave the other two blank.
I mean, I, I have no problem voting on all three. I just, I don't, how we would do it with one resolution and ability of three different answers.
Could the resolution be to approve or accept the completion of the three answers? So Mr. Berlin completes the three answers in the way that he thinks is best fit for Wattsburg and we agree to submit his answer? Could that be a way to handle three in one?
Well, we're certainly permitted as a board to discuss at the work session the direction we'd like to go. We certainly will not vote tonight on this. But we can, we can see, I, 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 I can go either way. I have no problem with these coming to us as a recommendation or I would have no problem breaking them out into three, into three separate questions.
Comment, Mr. President?
Yes, Mr. Pushcheck.
Again, just my personal opinion. I think as, they should be a firm no on everyone. Again, this has gone on too long. As Mrs. Lee pointed out, Mill Creek has had all kinds of time to figure out, you know, what they were going to do, and I just think that's, you know, put it, put it back in their court.
So can we modify the resolution where it says to approve the Mill Creek Township School District modification of the Erie County Technical School Resolution? Three questions? And then we could just, if we wanted to, vote no on those?
I, I mean, I think as the board in discussion, if the consensus is no across the boards, then you just vote on, vote on it in that way.
I think that's, that's the plan that we'll take, Mr. Berlin. Thank you for that recommendation. And then at the time, if a board member would like to separate the resolution into more than one part, we will do, so we will vote on all questions at once, yes or no, unless a board member would like to separate them. Does the board agree with that and understand that?
I personally have no problem with that, Dr. Pushcheck. The one thing I might suggest is maybe Mrs. Bendig or Mr. Berlin, if either one of you would mind putting together just a high-level overview of how the capital formula is built out, because I, if I remember correctly, it is different from the student base that we pay. So if you guys wouldn't mind doing that, I think that might help alleviate some of the questions surrounding that. I personally would vote no on that because Mill Creek has a much bigger tax base than Wattsburg ever will. But maybe if we can have a little bit of data around that, it'll help some of those questions.
Yeah, and that's a good point, Mrs. Lee, because there, there are, there are two funding situations with the tech school. That, you know, there's capital projects, renovations, and that's based off of market value. And then there's the every day, every year funding of the tech school, which is, takes into consideration student enrollment to a large percent.
So regarding the resolution, without objection, next week we will vote all three at once, yes or no, unless a board member would like to separate out one of the three questions and then we would just follow Robert's rules of orders to dissect that resolution and vote on it separately. So the plan for right now, so the board and the audience is clear, is that the board will vote on the resolution ECT dash one in its entirety, up or down, unless at that time, after a motion and a second, a board member would like to separate it out. And then we will report the results back to the VOTEC at that time. Hearing no objections, let's move on to ECT two, please, Mrs. Lee.
One second here. So ECT two, this is the Erie County Technical School Resolution for PennDOT. It's for the installation of the roundabout. So this would be to approve the resolution of the roundabout of the Erie County Technical School property as outlined. Could you click on that link, please? Just so everybody knows, they reached a settlement amount of about sixty thousand dollars that a, Mr. Berlin, I believe, will be split evenly per the formula across all the districts involved.
And, and that, again, just, just a refresher, that's, they're selling just a corner of the tech school property that's adjacent to a really, that really busy, bad intersection there where PennDOT has proposed the roundabout.
I noticed in the, the resolution, there was Greenfield Township School District, there was Wattsburg Area School District. There were several different names within boundaries. I don't know if that needs to be made aware. You'll go back, so right before that one, there's Wattsburg, that's us. There's Vanango Township School District. Vanango Township is also us. There's Greenfield Township School District, that's also us. So maybe that needs to be clarified.
Yeah, that's, their solicitor drew that up. I'll, I'll get, I'll contact him.
Thank you. Any discussion or questions regarding, and I, I believe there's a portion that would come back to the district from this sale?
That is correct, yes.
Okay, thank you. Any further discussion or questions regarding the PennDOT resolution for the roundabout, the sale of the Erie County Tech School property? Hearing none, that will be on the agenda for your consideration next week with any modifications need be to identify the proper Wattsburg Area School District. Mrs. Lee, is there anything else you'd like to report tonight from the Erie County Technical School?
I know, that's all the updates that we have. So once we vote next week, I'll hear very shortly after that. I'm sure Mr. Berlin will, as well as to what the general resolution is across all of our school districts. So you'll be hearing more information shortly, I'm sure.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Lee. I will have a very brief report next week from the Northwest Tri-County Intermediate Unit. And with that brings us to board correspondence and dialogue. Anything the board would like to discuss further this evening or bring up?
Dr. Pushcheck, this is Julie. I have a question.
Mrs. Pekovic, you're on.
Okay, thanks. Mr. Berlin, I know even though we're in substantial growth for Erie County, are we back at school full-time K to twelve because our numbers are low in Wattsburg School District? Is that right?
Yeah, yeah, I mean, it's, ultimately, it's the board's decision. Right now, as an admin team, we're rec, you know, we're recommending that we remain open full-time until such numbers dictate that we have to change our mode of instruction.
So our numbers, I can't remember the chart when you showed it. Was it just two per school that was out?
We have two positive cases in all of the school, out of all three schools.
Two positive in all three schools? So just two total in the district?
Yeah, one, one, I believe it's one student and one faculty member.
Okay, that's fine. So we do have low numbers. So that was based, that was, the decision was based on that, right?
Yeah, look, looking at, you know, that infection rate and also within our borders, the numbers are low.
Correct. Okay, all right. I just wanted to check numbers versus Erie County versus where our kids are, what our kids are dealing with. And then secondly, I have a question for you about the cyber school, so you can get back on your soapbox. But has anybody, any district ever refused or just said, we can't pay that amount for cyber, cyber school? We can't afford it as far as tax dollars?
Yeah, that's been tried. And what happens is the Department of Education just takes it out of our basic ed funding and pays the school anyways.
Oh. Okay.
Yeah, they've got it figured out.
All right, thank you. That's disappointing.
And for everyone in the audience, just be reminded, that's a million dollars. It's going from the programs that we have here in our district out to a cyber school and we have no say about it. As Mrs. Pekovic and Mr. Berlin just said. So we can have the best budget we want. Guess what? Right off the top, a million dollars going somewhere else. And in addition to our annual expenditures that we have with personnel and salaries and benefits, dollars is going right out the door, right off the top. Can you imagine what we would have and what we could do and the taxes we would not have to raise if we had half of that, seventy-five percent of that back here? So, you know, efforts would be best spent contacting your legislators and letting them know your dissatisfaction with the amount of money that is leaving us. Passes right through us. They give it to us, we give it right back out.
Yeah, and I could talk about it for hours, but I, I mean, if you look at those charter cyber school budgets, when you look at them, there's, they spend a significant amount of money on advertising. You know, other than our small newsletter that goes out a couple of times a year, you know, we're, we're not, we're not running big ads on all the media platforms. And the other thing, which I think should not be permitted, is those charter schools take our tax money and they, they lobby senators and House representatives and prop up their campaigns. So it makes them very hesitant to take any action against the charters because it's the hand that feeds them, at least in part.
I will get down my soapbox as well. Any other board correspondence and dialogue this evening?
This is Tara. I just have a question, actual clarification on something.
Mrs. Pound, go ahead.
For the tax, tax collector salary raise, is, is that starting January first, two thousand twenty-one? I think the agenda has it set for January first, two thousand twenty-two. Is that right?
The, the salary is already set effective January first, two thousand twenty-one. We are voting on next year's, so after the election this year, that, that is what the salary rates will be for January of two thousand twenty-two.
Gotcha. Thank you. Sure.
I would just like to thank the board and the audience tonight for allowing us to allow our finance committee meeting to continue during the beginning of our work session tonight. Those are all very important items that need to be discussed and shared with the community. So on behalf of the board, thank you. So that will bring us to a close tonight. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Josh, still moved?
Nicole, second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Or nay? We are adjourned. We wish everyone a safe and healthy ride home. Good evening, all.